Good morning. Welcome everyone to our February 25th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first item to deal with will be to stand and pledge if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Item number two, agenda review. Bob Meyer.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today?
Move the agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the agenda review. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Item number three is Economic Development Authority, so I need a motion to adjourn the regular board.
I'll move to recess.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to recess. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Good morning Nancy. We'll call our meeting to order for the Economic Development Authority Agenda Review. Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda either.
Motion to approve.
Good morning.
Good morning. Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Motion for the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes from January 28th. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Good morning.
Good morning.
You got a couple items for us. Please identify yourself for the records.
I'm Luke Petersons with City Mankato Facilities.
And I'm Nancy Volklun, also of the City of EDA.
We got public housing deck replacement first on our agenda. Okay?
I'm here to present the feasibility report for the 2025 Blue Earth County Public Housing Deck Replacement Project. This project consists of replacing four decks in Lake Crystal, one deck in Mapleton at public housing units. This work generally consists of replacing the decks in their entirety, including footings, framing, deck boards, and railings, besides one of the locations in Lake Crystal where we're just going to do deck boards and railings due to the foundations and framing being in great shape still. The estimated value of this project is $60,000 and will be funded by the 2025 Blue Earth County EDA Capital Funds. This project is expected to take place this summer of 2025.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the deck replacement. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? Sounds like a good project. Get it done for the summer and they can enjoy them, so. All right, I have a motion and a second. There's no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Now I have Minnesota Housing Local Housing Trust Fund Grant Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Minnesota Housing did establish a local housing trust fund grant program which encourages local housing trust funds to leverage additional resources for the communities. And this year they do have the grant again, and the grant funds need to be used for supporting households at or below 115% of the statewide median income. And some of the uses have to do with development, redevelopment of properties, financing of housing, down payment assistance, rental assistance, homebuyer counseling, and an administrative fee of up to 10%. And then these funds would need to be used within five years. And that would be the grant funds would be used in five years, and definitely your matching funds do not have to tie to the same projects that you use this grant funds for, but you do have to have matching funds. Since some 2023, the state has collected up to $5.8 million to fund this RFP process. And we can collect up to 225,000 in matching funds. And the first 150,000 that the EDA would put into the application would be matched dollar for dollar. And then any additional dollars could be matched dollar for $2, or $2 of EDA funds for a dollar of the state funds. And this application is due on Wednesday, March 19th, so we have a couple weeks to put this together. And we are recommending that the EDA consider providing matching funds of up to $150,000 that would be matched by the state with $150,000. So we have a resolution here authorizing us to put this application together and support it with $150,000.
Thank you Nancy for that report. Any questions from the board? We talked about this briefly the other day at the work session. If there's no questions from the board, what are the wishes?
I'll move the approval.
Okay.
Second.
Got a first and a second for the housing, local housing trust fund grant program. Any discussion?
Do you know what 100% of the state median income is? Do you have off the top of your head?
It's a sliding scale based on the size of a family's household.
Right.
I believe even, it's slightly higher than Blue Earth County, so it would be an advantage for us to use the statewide one. I want to say, Blue Earth County, the average median income is 100,000, so it could be that the state is about 115.
Okay.
That's just off the top of my head, but we can certainly get you that information.
No, that's fine. I was just saying, saw that, and you know, you're given a percentage, but you don't know what that is.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Now we'll reestablish the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Mankato.
We just wanted to share with the county that the Mankato, the City of Mankato last night did authorize to reestablish our housing authority. And it was intended to allow us to do the disposition of our public housing into the project-based voucher assistance, which we are doing with Blue Earth County as well. And through that process, we do have to convey the land to the city, so the city would own and lease the properties. And then the EDA would be doing the project-based assistance. So in that process, we determined that, at the time that the HRA had been terminated, that they did not properly transfer the properties. They transferred the administration of the program, but not specifically state that they transferred the assets of the property. So we want to resurrect the HRA, just to transfer those properties and then terminate the housing authority. So we just wanted to make you aware of that, that that would be happening. We have a public hearing coming up for March 10th. And at that time, the HRA then will transfer the properties to the city. And then following that HRA meeting, the council will terminate the HRA at that time. So it was just a formality so that we could finish this disposition. Blue Earth County EDA, you do have the appropriate resolutions transferring the properties. So it's not, you won't see the same thing happen through the Blue Earth County Public Housing Process. But within the next few months here, we did get approval from HUD to do Blue Earth County, and so that will happen in the next few months here. And so we'll be bringing you information at that time that you'll see that your property is being transferred to the Blue Earth County.
So you want a motion to reestablish this?
Just to acknowledge that the City of Mankato is establishing the housing trust fund.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second to reestablish the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Mankato. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much Nancy.
Thanks Nancy.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. We will now reconvene our regular board meeting and move on to item number four, planning and zoning. The next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present the action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've received your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to persons who remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. At this time, we'll ask the planning and zoning staff to introduce themselves and present the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott Salisbury, Land Use Planner, Property Environmental Resources. The first item on the agenda is PC 03-25. The applicants are the Judy H. Romine Meyer Trust and Mathiowitz Construction Company. The request is an interim use permit for an aggregate mine and associated processing of materials for the State Highway 60 Reconstruction Project. The site is located in the northwest quarter, of the northwest quarter of Section 34, Judson Township, and is in the agricultural zoning district. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. A representative of the applicant described the State Highway 60 Road Project and the proposed activities on the site. The site will be used in 2025, starting with the road construction project kind of in April, and will be fully reclaimed in 2026. The owner of a neighboring business described their business, which is to the west of the proposed site. She expressed concerns with the Highway 60 Construction Project, concerns with the road construction, that it will negatively impact their business, concerns with dust, and concerns with truck traffic impacting their business and customers. She also requested that the haul route be changed to travel east on 200 Street over to County Road 114. The planning commission discussed the project and the haul route. It was noted that changing the haul route to the east would be much longer and would potentially have more impact to the customers of the camper sales business, as that section of gravel road is almost a half mile. The haul route to the west is just over a quarter mile in length before it reaches State Highway 60. The planning commission discussed the proposed conditions requiring dust control and noise mitigation. The planning commission also noted that the township's recommendation regarding raiding and adding gravel to 200 Street prior to the project starting was not included as in conditions in the staff report. And then following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation for approval to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff with the added condition regarding 200 Street. And one quick note of the hours of operation, our ordinance has hours of operation ceasing at noon on Saturdays, where the applicant was proposing to operate till 7:00 PM on Saturdays due to the road construction projects. So our recommended hours in the resolution are the ceasing at noon on Saturday as consistent with ordinance. The board action is the passage of a resolution based on the recommendations of the planning commission.
All right. Thank you Scott. Is there any questions from the planning zoning staff at this point from the board? Hearing none. At this time, I will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make comment. Regarding PC 03-25, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 03-25? Anyone wishing to comment on PC 03-25? Last time for anyone wishing to comment on PC 03-25, please come to the podium and state your name. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
I will move, so move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the conditional use, or the interim use permit. Any discussion?
I would just add, you know, this is not our first Highway 60 road construction project. And as the commissioner that serves that district, you understand that you have dealt with any kind of detours. You've got dust, you've got heavy traffic, you've got people maybe not stopping at the stop signs. That is as well as they should. I think we've addressed a lot of those things in here. Appreciate the construction company being here, if there was any questions or things. But it's one of those things where we've all done this before. We know what to look for. We know how to take care of the dust. And sometimes you just can't make people drive where we'd like to have them drive, find their own detour. But I think this is our best alternative and would support it.
Good point, Commissioner. Any other comments? I think they summarized the meeting very well. The landowner was there and had some concerns, but I think they'll work through them this summer. All right, now I have a motion and a second to approve PC 03-25. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We'll move on to PC 04-25.
Good morning Commissioner. John Constantine, County Zoning Administrator. PC 04-25. The applicants are John A. Thomas and Brian Engels. And it's a request for review and approval of the Dakin's Wetland, a subdivision consisting of just two outlots. The property includes a portion of the partition of Dakin's Lake. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the northeast quarter of Section 14 in Butternut Township. At the planning commission, staff presented the report. The applicants were represented. The applicant commented on the access. He acknowledged the public works position that a new access will not be provided for Outlot A onto County Road 109. He stated they own property to the west of Outlot A and that they do not need access from County Road 109 on the east side of the property. A neighboring property owner expressed the following concerns at the planning commission. The applicant stated, I'm sorry, the applicant stated, "The access is public. The extension of Outlot A to County Road 109 has a pinch point and asked for the actual width at this point." The applicant stated, "What are the future development possibilities on either of the proposed outlots?" "That lack of access of Outlot A to County Road 109 should be officially noted." And the neighboring property owner also mentioned, "The proposed use is contrary to finding number six prepared by staff indicating the proposed use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. The access could change and proposal could impact the use of his property." The planning commission asked for clarification on the road frange requirement. And the planning commission also acknowledged there is access to Outlot A from the west and across Outlot B. And that, and that access does not appear to be an issue. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff. And the board action this morning for this item would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, is there any questions from the board for the staff? Hearing none, I will open up the public comment portion of this hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on item 03-25, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And I will not reread our rules since nobody has entered the room. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Mark Holstran, 21584, 499th Avenue. I, in the minutes, I don't believe that I stated it was public access. As far as that, I may have questioned whether it was or not. The, the one question that I have is that in Section 20-84, Section B, number 10, where it states that permanent buildings and structures at such other data may be required by zoning administrator within the area being platted, within 300 feet of exterior boundaries of the area being platted. And I measured it, and it's 130 feet from my house. And so that was, and then with the outlot distinction, I had asked at the meeting, and I believe it was John Constantine III that had mentioned that during, with outlot distinction, there was no future development. But in further conversations with George Leary, that would just have to go through the procedures and steps with that outlot distinction. So I was just wondering of the intended purpose in the future, if the, if there was usage of that. And what George Leary called the panhandle. And so that panhandle is what I would call the pinch point, and that's within 130 feet of my house, which does fall into that subsection number 10 of the three permanent structures within 300 feet. And Section B, "The information to be included on the preliminary plat as follows," as one of those requirements. And, and so I thank you for your consideration and follow up if you have any questions for me.
Right. Thank you, Mark. John, can you?
Certainly. So the requirement specifies that staff has discretion on that kind of content that would be included within the plat, being that this is a proposed outlot or two outlots, and no development is proposed. It was not necessary, in staff's opinion, to identify structures on neighboring property. Staff understands that the project is for wetland restoration in the future. Mr. Holstran is correct that development could be possible in the future through a replating process. It does not seem likely based upon the financial commitment of the applicants and their project. Any type of proposal for development on the property would have to go through multiple steps. Staff is not inclined to believe that that is very likely at this point in time, but it is possible. It would require a replat, and then any type of construction on the property would be reviewed for any additional permitting and would have to meet the standards of county ordinance.
Which would mean the transfer in development rights to build absolute houses, if there's any development rights in the area. So there's a lot of challenges in the future, especially after it's made into a wetland.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir?
The concern that I had, and I did mention it to George Leary, that Mr. Brian Engels had mentioned during his presentation at the zoning meeting, that it was a public access. And so I, I mentioned that to George, and he wasn't sure if that was, had been misspoken or not. But, and so as, as stated by Mr. Constantine, that there, it could go through the future things. It's a, it, that, that panhandle, as George Leary called it, it, it has that pinch point within 130 feet of my house. And so thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anything to add to that? John?
The panhandle does exist. There's no access that will be allowed by the highway department at that point. And our understanding is the access would be provided from the west.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's laid out in this document, and the engineer has not hand out accesses very well. And with it spelled out in this, he will not get an access on that, off that road.
I, I did have one addition in a phone conversation with George Leary. He did mention that there could be the access into Outlot B from 109, which there is two of them, and they could be relocated. Or, or just the existing usage of Outlot B, and then to travel northbound on Outlot B, and then through Outlot A, which then continues also into that part within 130 feet of my house. And so I was just wanting to make sure that I came to the public meeting
Not appreciate that.
and to the county meeting, and to express my best to business-like and, you know, present my concern. And thank you again for your consideration.
We appreciate that. And, and the other stuff, we just don't have a whole lot of control over, but I will tell you, there will not be an access off that road. It's just not going to happen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, is there anyone, anyone else wishing to comment on 04-25? Anyone else wishing to comment on 04-25? Hearing no other comments coming forward, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Isn't it true, John, that any, any buildings to be built would have to come back through the planning and zoning? And any other accesses, again, would have to come through the planning and zoning and come back to this board again?
That's correct. Absolutely. Yeah, we would, it would be extensive.
It'd be a replat.
It would have to be replated. You'd have to make sure that it can be replated. Staff has not evaluated if there could be a buildable lot there or not at this point in time, because we haven't gotten that proposal.
And I will tell you, if the plat was even made in the 1800s, it will cause problems for the person trying to replant it, from experience.
I will also address the buildings there. I'll introduce myself for the record. Dane Lynch, Wetland Specialist with the Property Environmental Resources Department. This plat, Outlot A, is proposed to be completely engulfed in a perpetual conservation easement by the Wetland Bank. No buildings are allowed within a perpetual conservation easement. So there won't be the possibility in Outlot A for buildings, assuming the well and project does go forward.
Thank you for that information.
That's comforting. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on PC 04-25? I have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, I will call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, the applicants, for doing the project. It's very much needed. We appreciate that, so. John?
Next item is PC 05-25. The applicant is Blue Earth County, and it is a request for review and approval of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 24 of the Blue Earth County Court of Ordinances. The amendment is to establish definitions, standards, and processes for adaptive reuses. At the planning commission, staff provided the report. There was no public comment and little discussion by the planning commission. This is an item that the planning commission had reviewed previously in work sessions. And following the discussion of the planning commission, it was voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff. And the board action this morning for this item would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. Any questions from the board at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I'll open up the public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 05-25? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 05-25? Last time for anyone wishing to comment on PC 05-25, please come to the podium. Hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
So move.
Got a first remark, got a second? Second from Vance. Any discussion? This is something that's been kind of coming through our process. I think we've talked about it a couple times at some different meetings. Planning and zoning spent quite a bit of time. Planning and zoning spent quite a bit of time on it. So appreciate all the work from the staff. Happy to do it. Okay, no other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Move on to PC 0625.
This, again, the applicant is Blue Earth County. It is a request for review and approval of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 24 of the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances. The amendment is to establish definitions, standards, and processes for home occupation outdoor storage. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report. There was no comment from the public, and the Planning Commission had, again, reviewed this in previous work sessions. I believe the County Board has also reviewed this in previous work sessions. And following the discussion of the Planning Commission, they voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the County Board based on the findings recommended by staff. And so, the board action for this item would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board?
No.
At this time, I'll open up the public comment. For anyone wishing to comment on PC 0625, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 0625? And the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 0625, please come to the podium. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the County Board for action.
Move to approve.
Got a first or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will add that we've spent several hours discussing this item. We had a little bit of a discrepancy on the acreage of how much land we want to allow for this, but we dialed in on four acres.
Four acres.
So I'm right. And we, we, the minutes don't reflect, because we actually had more discussion in a work, work session before, that we thought that was just not quite enough, or the, the two acres that was proposed wasn't quite enough. So we came in on four acres, and I think this will be a good fit for the outdoor storage areas. So, again, appreciate the staff working on that and getting that done and moving forward. Any other comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Does anyone got an update for us?
We have one other action item this morning for the board. Retail cannabis registration. So again, this is a request from Blue Earth County for review and approval of accepting the consent from Lime Township and Mankato Township for issuing retail cannabis business registrations. Lime Township notified county staff on February 7th of a passage of a resolution at their November 12th, 2024, meeting, providing consent to the county. And Mankato Township also passed a resolution January 15th of 2025. In November of last year, the county accepted consent to issue registrations for the 21 other townships in Blue Earth County. Mankato and Lime Township are their own zoning authority, and therefore, they operated on a different timeline than the other 21 townships in the county. The adoption of Standards for Cannabis Business, PC 39-24 ordinance amendment, limits retail registrations to one per 12,500 residents, so six total. Registrations with the other zoning authority jurisdiction will count towards the Blue Earth County maximum of six. Mankato and Lime Township will continue to administer their own zoning standards. Staff recommends approval of acceptance of the consent from both Lime Township and Mankato Township to issue registrations for retail cannabis businesses. And the board action would be adoption of the resolution based on the findings recommended by staff.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Kind of same routine as we did before with the other township, so we've seen this once already. So, do you have a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to item number five. We've got Sheriff Jeff Worsell here to talk about anti-meth joint powers agreement. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This morning, I have a request to, for the Drug Task Force to enter into a JPA with the BCA and the Minnesota Anti-Methamphetamine Task Force. This program is similar to the Anti-Heroine Task Force. They've been members of for several years, and what it does is reimburse agents overtime when working first degree methamphetamine cases. With all the uptick in heroin and fentanyl, methamphetamine cases, it can be put on a back burner, and they're trying to
Sure.
get that prioritized again, because it hasn't gone in, hasn't gone away, so.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions for the sheriff? What are the wishes of the board? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
All right. This time, we'll move on to item number six. Ms. Carrie Harvey, how are you this morning from IT?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ooh, dropped my phones. All right. So I'm bringing forward today memo for our RFP for our fiber to our Public Works Building. The one correction that I want to add is the date. I have March 4th on there, and it should have read through 2525 for the date of the memo. So I just want to make sure that that is corrected.
Okay, thank you.
So Comlink Solutions, we originally brought to the board on December 3rd for approval for $248,906.92. After asking Comlink to provide a scope of work, we were told that they, they didn't include materials in the bid. So, after hearing that, it would, it would greatly increase the price of that bid. So, we looked at the next lowest bid, and they didn't include testing and splicing. So that was another one that was not fully put together. So, it, at this point, all the rest of them were significantly higher, and it is my recommendation to reject that bid for Comlink due to their not putting materials in for $248,906.92.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussions? This has been kind of a
This has been fun for you.
Lot of work for you, hasn't it?
It's been a roller coaster.
I mean, I would, I would imagine all those things were put in the bid.
The RFP. That's correct.
And
Ridiculous.
Doesn't make sense for a professional business to overlook that.
Well, good luck on the next round.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. You got a vote yet, so I got a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you for your work on that, Carrie.
Yes.
It's a lot of work for you. All right. With that, we will move down to Human Services. Is Phil?
There, I saw him off by, so I know they're in the building.
He's in the building.
I don't know why, just moved by your question.
That's fine.
He was coming to check the schedule, and I found him.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Phil. We're a little ahead of schedule, so.
Well, how about that? We did check, and we were there.
I didn't even get to drink my coffee.
What the heck?
We can take care of that for you. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
See ya.
Good morning.
So we are going to just do our item number seven with the Human Services. I'll let Phil get settled in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We've got several things on the agenda to go through today.
Yes, we do a couple of action items to start for you and board members to consider. The first of those is in Mental Health Center, and this is a contract we hold with Nicolet County. It's ironically what Shannon and I were just talking about. But not so much just their contract, but our Mental Health Center. And this particular piece of our Mental Health Center is a contract we have with the neighboring county, obviously, for psychiatric services. When we have talked recently about mandated, non-mandated, these are mandated services that each county is responsible for, including the psychiatric availability. And so, Nicolet County satisfies one of their mandates by contracting with us in this particular way. The structure of this contract is more like a retainer, to be candid, of $25,000 annually, or $62.50 per quarter. And it is a flat rate, so that they can satisfy that, that responsibility. And what that is, is that we will serve them, you know, as a priority if that comes up. So that's how, that's what the hook they're on, and this is how they satisfy that. It's worked out, the volume for us has been pretty low, so I think the idea that we're stand-ready is what they're paying for, and it's been a, a good relationship. Term is January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25. And then, Mr. Chair, just one other action item, and that is fraud investigation. This is something that we've been kind of struggling through because of budget primarily, and then also, we lost our long-term staff in Ginger Peterson, and so it changed things for us. We've done a temporary approach, and that's with this Northwoods Fraud Investigators, and they have a contract with a few other counties as well. And it's worked out quite well to kind of hold the volume in, in place and try to take care of these cases. We've burned through our first round, which was a similar amount that you'll see here, $24,000. And we were hoping to post what was projected to be like a .74 position, so a three-quarter time position, because that's what we could afford. That's what we were going to do. And the state has basically said to us, whoa, 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 we'll see if we can get you some more money. Like, okay. And we've been kind of waiting for this response. We've got it. They, they did up it. I'm still wanting to kind of talk to Bob about this, and also look at the real dollars, because I, I'm concerned that it might be that, yes, we can hire even a full-time staff, but then we're going to hit right back into, as they get raises and cost of living, that we're not going to be able to afford the contract again. So I, I, that I don't have for you today. And we did, Shane is the one in charge of fraud, and she said, could we just extend this? So we're asking for another temporary contract with Northwoods, and that would be through June or until the money that we're asking for runs out, which is $24,000.
Okay?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Questions or comments on only two items today? I wish I could take credit for that.
Is the level of, I don't know, fraud activity, I mean, is it up and down?
It's been very strong. We have a, I'm part of why I think the state was interested in talking to us more, and we had a conference call with Bob on this particular issue, Commissioner. They are interested just because we have a reputation where we've had really good volume and really good return on investment numbers, so that we've always been cost-effective, and so there's measurements that are in place, really on both levels. The volume's pretty high for us, that we find cases. Most of those are kind of worked out through an administrative process. But there are, and I know Megan's here today, but we've talked to county attorney, that there are other things we can do more on the criminal side that we haven't done a lot of volume on. But depending on how this goes, and we have to have our act back together before we can really approach county attorney and say, here's where we're at, what would you like to do? But there's an openness to looking at more of the more serious criminal issues as well, which take a lot more investigation time and other things, yeah.
Okay? Other questions? I have a motion and a second on the action items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, I have a couple of informational and discussion items, and then I will hand it over to Shannon after that. The first of those being supportive housing, and we've talked about this with the board fairly recently, about our, our services that we offer in supportive housing. You'll see in the slide, the 24 outcomes. There is a trend line over the past several years of increases in both household serves, served and participants. And you'll see those numbers there. The percentage breakout to the right of 34% being multi-person housing, and the majority, 66% being singles. And really, the mission here, in the next box or bar chart, shows the stabilization and prevention mission is really what we're about here in supportive housing. This slide that shows exit numbers and reasons is the indicator. I would love to bring this to you every year. I don't think it's always this clean, but what we're trying to do is, is step people back down into stability, and so that they have a house of their own, that they have a way to pay that. So this one, the 10 indicator, by far the highest, is that they do find rental solution with a subsidy. So that's, that's just a great, great outcome, and I'm very proud of staff for working on that. You'll see the ones and twosies also on the list, very hard to serve areas. And what this also says about those 10 cases is that they engaged. They wanted to, to find a pathway out of the pattern they were in. If they don't, there's not a lot of power we have or leverage in that, other than if they get in trouble legally to do much. And so, they sit and spin, is what we talk about, and we much prefer that they engage and try to work with us. And so, I, I think it's a really good result from last year. The next slide just goes into some of the outcomes, the things that we do look at and measure. First of those, our relationship with the city and the EDA. There's ARP or ARPA funds that go to shelters and provide, working with providers, resources that are passed through to providers. There is the large housing project that's been in the paper that has been approved through using those same funds, which is really a, a very significant effort. And then, also use of state funds to try to create housing trust funds, so that we have resources, you know, as things ebb and flow, that we'd have a place to have resources banked, if you will. And so, a lot of good outcomes there with the city. 364 triage calls that we take, that staff take, and there can either be phone calls, emails, or face-to-face visits. Some people we serve do not have phones. They, we most often give information referral. What are you looking for? How can we help you? Here's who you call, here's the number, or, you know, come to the office and we'll help you make the call if you want more assistance. So those referrals, resource and information are part of that mission. And then, education, you'll see the prevention, preventing rental eviction, so again, trying to be proactive, really working with landlords a lot. And this is behind the scenes, and I often don't see it, so I couldn't even tell you a lot of the stories, but I know that there's a lot of good faith that's built. If we're proactive with the situation, if we know somebody has a history of going in and out of rental situations, it's hard on everybody. And so instead, we say, how do we try to come up with a plan that's, that is sustainable? And that's been very successful. We also have a resource guide, just a resource that people can look at and know where to go or make calls that they might need. And then, there's a whole bunch of educational presentations that staff do with different groups, the landlords and corrections. I really do think those other ones, in-house, housing's one of those that crosses over almost everything we do in Human Services, and so them sitting at sapping with other groups of, units of, of Human Services has really been a crossover education mission that I think has been good. Sometimes you miss that, because you're busy, you're in the blur, you don't slow down enough to make sure we're talking to each other. So I think this is an area that does a good job of that. The next one is centralizing all of our housing support and procedures, and we just talked to the board about some of that, that we're trying to put some structure in place so we have a reference point, because there is some volatility or change. Each legislative session, there's some changes to the money and the policies that are, that come to us from the state. And so, trying to stay ahead of that and say, here's our local version of what we're about, and putting that in right is what our goal is. Survey for Human Services staff, that's again, to make sure we're on the same page and that they're speaking the same language as we are and know the resources in our, in our house, as well as out in the community. And the last one is participation in outreach work, case consultation. Things like the yellow line, I know housing and yellow line crossover quite a bit, so that is also just good for me to see from my chair, is that there is integration in our approach to these hard-to-serve individuals. They really are hard to serve very often. A breath, Mr. Chair, and then I have one other.
Any questions on these items? From Phil.
The next one is just the annual review, and you'll see it's, it's in a very And you'll see it's, it's in a very kind of raw form. But it does kind of cover a snapshot of what's going on in our initiative. So our adult mental health initiative and how we approach this as a region. There is resource and revenues that we can access in the services we have under the umbrella of the initiative. You know, I talked about the Nicollet County contract and that, I think Shannon's going to talk some about this too. But we, that's that serious mental illness. That's actually the middle category. The one, like our clinic is serious and persistent mental illness. So that, that's the one when we talk, well, somebody else can do it. I can tell you in our whole region, there's nobody that does a clinic around serious and persistent mental illness except us. We're it. And so there isn't somebody else that's going to say, oh, please, could I serve that population? It's a hard population to serve. Our psychiatric prescribers know that. They care about that. There's a pretty good relationship we have at the state hospital. So there's connection there. But it is all kind of woven together. And some of those things are mandatory, like the SPMI mission. Counties have to have a plan for that. They don't have to have their own mental health center. But they do have to have contracts for both SPMI and SMI when we talk about mandate and non-mandate. So those, those are part of that picture. And this is a way we've solved that, both in Blue Earth County currently and then also the region. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. The regional manager, Ricky Prival, has been with us for more than a year. So that created some stability, which we really appreciate her and her talents. There's been new delegates from three different counties that are part of this 10-county joint powers board. And, you know, that's both good and hard at times because they're learning the ropes. And we all, it kind of changes the rhythm of the room. But really good people, and it's, it's good to have fresh blood to and new perspective. So both, both of those are going on. We've also spent some time in what we call the children's cabinet, which is an offshoot of what has been an adult mental health initiative. But we already have the structure. So the supervisors get together from those counties and, and talk and try to plan as well. And there's some big projects that are out in the hopper right now that might take a long time still to fully form. But we're trying to move forward, specific, I'll just say, to the idea of some kind of stabilization crisis center for kids. We have that for the adults, but they can't stay at the crisis center. So we're wondering if we could stand that up regionally because it would be the right scope, not to try to do that county by county. But it's a big project, and we have to find money for it. So Mayo's given us some startup money to hire a consultant, and so that's our first step. RMT stands for Regional Management Team. So I apologize, we usually don't bring academics to the board. But Regional Management Team, it's made up of supervisors and participants in all 10 counties. So that's a really important part of the initiative. Psychiatric, we've talked some about that. You'll see some of the bullets that there's both urgent care we provide at the crisis center and else in our clinic, and then also just normal, regular psychiatric services for individuals that are on their caseloads. ERTS stands for Intensive Residential Treatment Services. It has been around for so long that we just call it ERTS. I was like, what does ERTS stand for again? But it really is a whole part of stability, again, much like the housing mission we talked about before, serious and persistent mentally ill folks usually, not always, but that are very, in a very much of a transition, multiple need type of situation. And ERTS is set up so that it can handle both the board and lodge park and the services. And it caters just to that population. The bullets were interesting to me because I thought, the $8, that must be a mistake. It's not. The, the point of this is that like when we do have the ERTS, usual and customary ERTS placements, those go quite well. And then we rally around special needs. And you'll see that there were four kind of requests that the, you know, person didn't fit in the way that things were defined. And two had to be denied because the rules about copayments and spend downs, we couldn't work around. Two others, we gained medical coverage, so solved their problem through that. But the $8 is, is what it costs us to kind of just cover a need that's unusual. And so we're very proud of that. Like, it wasn't $800,000. It wasn't $80,000, it was $8. And these, people scramble around and know the ropes and try to do it cost-effective. That's the point. Clubhouses, you guys are all aware of our clubhouse. And then each county has clubhouse. 561 people are involved in that, that part of our mission. This last year went up by 30 members or in 24. And that's a good number for, for us. 10-county events are planned so that people kind of cross over between the counties. You'll see the third bullet about increased focus on young adult members who also have the same diagnoses. In seriousness persistent mental illness, there's five diagnoses. One of those five you have to have in order to qualify. So it's a defined category. And so young people that might have one of those five, and they're probably going to need case management and a lot throughout their whole lives, are, are part of that group. And so we're trying to reach out to that, which is, you know, really important part again for staff. And then there's some physical pieces that are always part of the picture. Space enhancement, three models in some of the clubs. Stakeholders is our big get-together where it's training and information sharing in, in kind of a conference-type setting. COVID took us out in that and didn't have that for a couple of years. And we're building back. 100 participants this last year, good, good number again, and glad to see that bouncing back. Housing with special services is a lot different than what we were talking about before. Board and lodge with specified needs. But some people are very, need very intensive nursing care or medical help, or they need somebody to just really be with them and give them natural supports in their day-to-day functioning. And we can provide all that through this special service area. I think the board's quite aware of the crisis center. Part of the crisis center is the residential stabilization. And then the other parts here that you'll see, starting with mobile crisis, that there were 5,400 calls breakdown between adults and children. And children can be served in mobile crisis, so that is allowed. You'll see the breakdown between adult assessments and stabilizations. And then the same for kids, their assessments and stabilizations throughout the year. The crisis center itself, the residential component, 758 admits, which was down from the prior year. And I'm, I'm not sure why in that particular way that is down. It could be COVID-related, but it's hard to say. And you see the bed days, the occupancy rate. The occupancy rate is interesting in that I, you know, I've worked in residential facilities, and you always think, well, you want to be at 100%. 55 to 70% is considered full from the state. That's the goal, 55 to 70. So we've always been over that. We're still over that now or at the top of that full range. But, you know, I think Horizon does a great job of trying to serve the need. And so there's times where we are over that too. And then satellite sites is really important. It's just a little bullet here. I talked to Angie about this because we're trying to have mobile crisis, have satellite sites out in communities, the other counties, and, and sometimes in EDs and the hospitals and the emergency departments, in schools. So trying to do that footprint from a more regional perspective too, which isn't easy. It's not easy to sustain, but so far, so good. I mean, we've, we've established a foothold in these communities, in certain places. Try to be cost-effective. And I think it's really working. So access goes up a lot, especially if you have a mobile crisis and it takes you an hour to get there. I think a previous law enforcement person knows travel is like a big part of it. And it's emergency, you got a half an hour, one-way trip to get to the emergency. And like, what are you going to come upon? And that happens in mental health, it definitely does. Let's see. Last part of bullet on that section was just outreach and marketing, staff recruitment and retention. This is one of those areas where that pay becomes an issue, again, like in the crisis center, to get people stable in their job so that they stay for a long period of time. And we build institutional knowledge, not, not always easy to do in these areas. I skipped over Ready Responder. That app is just mental health professionals. Like myself, you can basically be on call and be called out at any point is the app. And it's at kind of the front-end stage. But I think it's a really good idea, kind of like an Uber for a mental health response, which is kind of cool. And then I'm not going to go through these last ones. They are important, but we have grants and contracts we're working on. Like the first one, U of M contract, that's for child psychiatry, which we don't have a lot of in our community or even in our region. So U of M has a remote contract for us. And then the last one is some strategic planning bullets that are also important, being worked on as we go forward. So I will leave it at that. Thank you for your time and hearing this, this work that staff are doing.
Thank you, Phil. That's a lot of stuff. But is there any questions on any of the information that's been provided at this point? Thank you again. Appreciate it, Phil.
Thank you.
Shannon.
Hi, thanks for having me back, commissioners. Honestly, I didn't prepare anything. These were just notes from my prior meeting. And because what I just wanted to briefly talk about is what we just kind of talked about a little bit last time, but kind of adding to that. I, I appreciate the continual trying to balance, like what, what can we do that's best for people? And also continuing to balance, how do we balance that in our budget, right? And finding what is the most cost-effective? And that was one of the things that came back to and even answered with Kevin's question last time is, you know, how, how can we, what services can, what services do we need to provide? And, but then also, how can we get creative to reduce those costs, costs to? And that's like last time we talked about, we have student, we have youth or people who need to be sent out of state for care right now. And that's increasing that budget by millions of dollars, right? Our expenditures are going out. And that was kind of what I asked last time is what can we do as a county, as also state to help get those services back into Minnesota locally? So we can, it's going to be a lot, much more cost-effective measure if we can provide those services locally and not need to have them in, other people in different states. So with that, one of the things I actually had a chance to do this past meeting was learn more about the mental health center and even take a walk through it. And one thing that I wanted to share back with you is, of course, my, I was a kid at home. I apologize, called it right at that time. One of the things I wanted to share back with you that I learned about and was impressed about is, so our mental health center that you were actually just touching on serves those severe mental, severe and persistent mental, people with severe and persistent mental illness. So the numbers that I had asked about it, or asked and learned about was that right now for our 10-county region, we serve, they, that center serves about 1,200 people with severe persistent mental illness, which is a lot. The part that stood out to me that I wanted to share with you is when we talk about that cost-effectiveness, when we're able to serve people in this capacity and keep them out of our, and keep them out of needing hospitalizations, we can save about $30,000 a month, keeping somebody out of that hospital, which would come back on some of our taxpayer dollars to help provide that. So, yeah, moving, I, that, that's, I just wanted to share that number because that was something that stood out to me is, yes, what, what do we need to take care of? And we have to pay for by the state. But how can we be creative and find these ways that actually saves us money in the long run? And I just, and that was one that stood out to me. So that's just something I wanted to share back with you guys. But I thought that that was a really, those are some really good numbers.
Thank you.
Yeah. But thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and then also, I was excited. It was briefly mentioned at the meeting too, that there's, and then you were just talking about right now with looking at what can we do for the children's side? Because right now, that's the adult side that we're serving, the, the SPMI. We're serving that adult side. What does that look like for, for youth? And knowing that there's some backing by, you said backing from the Mandato Clinic or Mayo?
Mayo.
From Mayo to actually look into that, which will get at what, what I had also talked about last time. There, that's, that's exciting to me. How can we serve students here, make it a more cost-effective, budget-balanced way, and also keep people in our community and serve the people in our community? So I think it's just a good balance. And I'm, and I'm looking forward to those possibilities.
Yeah.
I might just add, commissioners, that Shannon's expert in what I'm about to say in the kid side of things. It's SEDs, a Serious Emotional Disturbance. And, you know, back in the clinical days, really what you have to do as a kid is meet either one of the diagnoses or be at risk of one of the diagnoses. Well, I'm like, I'm sorry, but I worked with adolescents for a long time, and kids are at risk. It's not hard to get there. And you don't know. And then the other thing we talked about at the work session about, you know, that younger group, 18 to 24, the really major mental health problems bud out a lot of times, really in the first year, the freshman or sophomore year of college or that age. Schizophrenia, bipolar disorder. I mean, it just comes out of nowhere. So you think, well, you kind of know your kid. But then that young adult area is where a lot of those really serious diagnoses start to pop out and show themselves. And so that's why I think we have to be sophisticated because it's really hard to, to know when you're dealing with somebody that's young, where, where the story is going to go.
Yeah. Lot going on. And Shannon, thank you for that point because I think you're, you're, you're right when, you know, I appreciate you going and looking at the clinic, actually seeing it and seeing what's going on. And I think you're going to, you know, as a board, we're going to have to look at a lot of that stuff. Because with what we got coming down from the state, the budget crisis we have already in human services, we're just all going to have to really try to get our, give our input, even if we're not experts. I'm certainly not an expert on this stuff. But we fund it. So we have to get educated and figure out different ways to be creative.
Absolutely. And that's, and I do appreciate that you guys take the time to do that because I, and I also appreciate even the things that we've learned being on the board. Because it's not all cut and dry. It's not, oh, what's this, we should slash. Sometimes, point A doesn't always go straight to point B. And sometimes adding in that other aspect, kind of like the mental health center, can truly mitigate a lot of those extra expenses. And so how, how can we always continue to provide what we need to provide? But how can we also reduce the cost of those, maybe through, maybe through putting in a little bit of money into something else, but actually has a higher output of reducing that bottom line? So, and also still obviously serving the people that we're needing to serve in the first place. So, yeah. So I appreciate you guys continuing to look at the whole picture. And I appreciate, honestly, I appreciate a lot of the work here because there's some good things that provides that balance.
And Phil and I have had this conversation before. Prevention is always the first thing to go because you can't put a number on it. We all know that if we prevent stuff, we keep them out of the sheriff's jail, we keep them out of the mental health, we keep them out of hospitals. But it's just hard to quantify that. And, and so I think we need to circle back around to that, maybe not have the prevention, but what if? So a lot of things going on.
Yeah, something's got to give. I mean, we've talked about that, and I, I don't want to hide from that reality. But what is it? Yeah, that's hard sometimes to pick. But we've got to, we've got to find a pathway through. Good to see everybody.
Yeah, thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Enjoy the sunshine.
Yeah, really. Well, thank you.
All right, we've got plenty of time. Do we want to take a quick break or just fall through the rest of this? Who wishes the board?
It's up to you, folks.
Go through as far as I'm concerned.
All right, we'll keep going then. We'll turn it over to the administrator at this point.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is county board minutes for February 11th.
Move to approve. Beat ya.
I got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
Who would like to pay the bills?
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second for the bills. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab eight in your pack, it is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have two action items for the board's consideration today. And they are tied together. They're both authorizations for the county board chair and the administrator to sign agreements with AFSMI, our largest union within the county, serving both the Human Services Bargaining Group as well as the Courthouse Bargaining Group. Just a quick summary on these tentative agreements. They are three-year agreements covering the years 2025 through 2027. The general wage adjustments in these agreements are the same as what we've negotiated with other bargaining groups. So three and a quarter for 2025 and three and a half each of years 2026 and 2027. Couple other items to note in these agreements. We did increase our on-call payment rate for human service on-call from $60 a day to $75 a day. And then also expanded a little bit of the overtime element. The previous language said time The previous language said time and a half for weekends. We extended that timeframe from 5:00 PM on Friday to 8:00 AM on Monday. So really just a small increase in time after 5:00 o'clock on Friday. We also had some language added that will now allow the employer to consider prior relevant experience for applicants for positions in the county in terms of vacation accrual. So we'll have some ability to improve our ability to recruit through that negotiation. We also did add some language that defines the cost share for the employer and the employee for high deductible health plan premium amount. We have been running at about 84% employer and 16% for the employee based on a derived figure. We codified in this agreement that the employer would pay 85% of that plan and the employees would contribute 15% for the family portion of that coverage. We also did agree on this, these agreements to add single coverage for dental insurance. As the board is aware, we had added that as a benefit to our non-union employees. And so these two bargaining groups did ask for similar coverage. And so there was a lot of other language items that were either cleaned up or adjusted in some way, but don't really have a dramatic impact on the operations or the fiscal impact of those agreements. So bringing those two agreements forward for the board's consideration today.
All right, thank you, Bob. Any questions or comments on the two agreements? Do you want them in one action or two separate?
Since we negotiate together, I think maybe one motion is just fine for these.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Of a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions or comments? Good job on behalf of the admin team that negotiated these contracts. I know they were a lot of work and they take a lot of time. I have not been on negotiations for a while, but very much appreciated getting these done. There's no other comments, I got a motion and a second for the two contracts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Under the informational items then, we have filled a on-call library clerk in the library. We also have a promotion of a social worker in our children's mental health area to a program coordinator. This was a new, newly budgeted position with no backfill. Then we have filled two maintenance technicians in our public works department. We also have filled a criminal intelligence analyst in the sheriff's department. This again was a newly budgeted position, which was a result of a, someone leaving the organization and so the position was reorganized and reclassified. And then we did have a resignation of a library technician in the library. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that part-time position. And lastly, we have filled a waste and recycling technician at the landfill. And so be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions on the informational items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
All right. Tab nine in your packet is a request from the St. Paul Port Authority to consider a PACE, a Property Assess Clean Energy Special Assessment application of, for a new hotel in Mankato. There is material in the packet that outlines special assessment. We historically at the county have supported these PACE applications. There's no financial impact to the county. We serve as kind of a conduit utilizing our property tax special assessments to collect those payments for the St. Paul Port Authority. So bringing it forward for board consideration today.
For the wishes of the board?
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? For the Port Authority? Any discussion? We don't do this very often, but they do a lot across the.
No, it seems like about one a year we've been running.
Okay, there's no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 10 in your packet then, oops, let me get my screen to work here, is a application to conduct off-site gambling by the Wasika Hockey Association at Indian Island Winery on April 5th. This is kind of a standard application that needs county board approval. And so bringing it forward for your review and approval if so desired.
Move. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the off-site gambling application? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 11 in your packet is a memo regarding advancing capital funds to the ditch fund to cover negative ditch balances. This is a kind of an administrative step that's done annually to transfer funds from the capital fund to the ditch fund to cover those cash balances in those ditch, ditches that have a negative amount. The amount this year is 7.7 million, 278,800 and 79 cents. I will tell you that's down from the previous year, but up a little bit from the year prior. So this amount does change and is a constant challenge for the ditch authority to manage those ditch balances. A lot of this is related to improvements where subsequent to the improvement, we oftentimes do some bonding. The board may recall that there was $4 million of bonding done at the end of 2024, partly to address these issues.
So moved.
Of a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the negative ditch resolution? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 12 in your packet, and I'm glad Megan is here because she did most of the work on this. This is the latest revision on our data practices policy. It really is updating the policy to reflect current law around data practices. It does provide a lot of guidance to our staff when responding to data requests from the public. I think one of the biggest additions to the policy addresses data breaches, and that is some relatively new law that's gone into effect. And so unless Megan has more to add, it's really a document that helps us be responsive to data requests in Blue Earth County.
Do you have any to add?
It should be largely the same as was discussed at the board work session.
Okay.
A little over two years ago, about two years ago.
Okay, well, thank you for all that work on that. Appreciate it. What are the wishes on the data practices policy?
Move.
Got a motion and a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 13 in your packet is the financial status report for the end of 2024. We're a little late getting this to the board, so I apologize for that. But wanted to present kind of our year-end results. You'll see that our total revenues came in at 132.1 million and total expenditures were 134.7. This is actually a little bit better of a deficit than I anticipated. And some of the reason for that really is that bonding that was done towards the end of the year. That was a $4 million bond that shows up in the other financing sources towards the top. Otherwise, our deficit would have been larger, which was planned to some degree. Some of the kind of major things I would point out is our state and federal revenues were down from the previous year by 6%. So that's a trend that is concerning on a lot of different levels, both in terms of kind of the history of being less, but then looking forward, knowing some of the struggles that the legislature is currently wrestling with makes me nervous. Our local tax levy came in at 99.7% of what we budgeted. So we had a few taxes that were uncollected, which is, I would say fairly typical, but very close to what we anticipated. The same is true with our transportation sales tax revenue. We came in just a little bit under our budget. And so we have seen that trend line kind of level out a little bit. We had been seeing really a pretty upward trend in our transportation sales tax for a number of years. We're starting to see that level off, which may again be reflective of some things in our economy. On the very upside of things, our interest on investments came in at a little over 8 million. We hadn't expected interest rates to recover as quickly as they did. You'll see we had a budget of 1.5 million. So we far exceeded our budget there, which obviously helped our bottom line. On the expenditure side, our public aid assistance was down from the previous year by 7%, but still over budget a little bit. So that's again a line as we look forward at potential challenges with our budgeting, especially in our human services department. That would be an area that we'd want to pay some attention to. Our personal services actually came in very close to budget, which was a little bit of surprise given the market adjustment that was done at the beginning of 2024 after the budget had been completed. So was pleased with the outcome there. Our contracts and fees line again was over our budget. Some of that is related to highway projects and the timing of when those payments occur. So not a major concern there. Our building and equipment purchases were again above budget. A lot of that's related to the Public Works project and the timing of when those expenditures were budgeted. We had more budgeted in '23 anticipating that that would happen sooner, but with the delays, some of those expenses then fell into '24. So overall, you know, maybe a little better than anticipated, still a deficit, which is something that we want to continue to watch, but less of a deficit than anticipated, which is, I guess, the good news. On the enterprise fund, then the ponderosa, you'll see revenues were 5.2 million, expenditures were 5.4. We did have quite a bit of machinery and equipment expense that pushes those expenditures higher, which is kind of one of the challenges with that budget is some of those capital investments oftentimes lead to a deficit. And then other years when we don't have those expenditures, we show quite an excess. So nothing to be concerned about in those results, in my opinion. The second page then has our cash and investment balances. You'll see our total available funds at the top of the page are sit at 80.3 million. The six-month operating needs have it at 62.5. So we are above our target at the end of the year. Total county funds then sit at 139.2 million. And then you can see some of our investment returns at the bottom of that page. And so pause there and ask if the board has any questions on the December financial status report.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, then item, or tab 14 is the January financial status report, so the first month of our new fiscal year. And you'll see our total revenues are sit at just under 4.8 million against total expenses of 13.2 million. So here again, this is a time where we start utilizing that cash balance to cover our shortfalls until the first half taxes are collected. Nothing major to point here, just not a lot of activity in that first month, but everything seems to be tracking as one would expect. The enterprise fund again is ponderosa landfill. You'll see here that our total revenues in January were 714,000 against 250,000 of expenses. So again, you start to see where our revenue exceeds our expenditures when we don't have some of those large capital or cell improvements included in the budget. Second page again then shows our available funds. Now at the top, our total available funds are at 73.3 million. Our six-month operating needs for the calendar year 2025 budget have it at 74.4 million, so slightly under our target there. And then the total county funds sit at 131.4 million at this point in time, the end of January. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on the January report.
Any questions on the January? Hearing none, move down.
All right, item number 15 in your packet is the fourth quarter of '24's donations, the monetary donations are all from the library or to the library. So took in 5,815.15 in cash donations. We also have in-kind donations given to the library totaling $1,783.86. And then some volunteer time given to the library as well. And we monetized that to a total of $3,845.89. And so asked the board to accept those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the donations? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
And that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
At this point, since we've gotten everything done on our list, we will start with some committee reports from Commissioners. In advance, I will start with you today.
All right. After our last board meeting on the 12th, on Wednesday, the 12th, I had a NACO RAC, Rural Action Caucus, meeting. On the 13th, I spent the day up in St. Paul for Transportation Day at the Capitol. Was able to talk to our Congress, our House and our Senate, actually Lou Fredericks and Bjorn Olsen. And talked to them about the issues that are concerning transportation. On, let's see, the 18th, we had a work session. On the 19th, Wednesday, the 19th, I attended the Alma Preservation and Grand Reopening Celebration, the old Walnut Towers. And they did an amazing job. And I got to say that they, on speeches that I heard, they really praised Blue Earth County for what we have put into that. On the 20th, I attended the TDS board meeting. And then that evening, I attended the St. Clair Reconstruction Open House. And on the 21st, I had a Zoom meeting for the NACO Legislative Conference Ambassador Preparation Meeting. And that was the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Okay, then, yep, you and I went to the MICA meeting on February 12. And then on the 18th, we did. on the 18th, we did have a county board work session and two joint drainage meetings. And then Saturday, this last Saturday, the 22nd, did a pedal pass poverty and actually they raised over, it's one of the better years, over 110,000 plus. I don't know what it ended up actually, but.
Wow, good for you guys.
Good for you. Supported and, yeah, it was kind of a surprise because we had a lower amount that we thought we were gonna get, quite a bit lower. Anyway, thank you. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. The other?
Since our February 11th board meeting, we had a JD nine hearing that afternoon. Also participated in the February 12th NACO RAC call. On the 13th, we had a JD 36 landowner meeting. It's been mentioned on the 18th work session and the JD 36, JD 48 hearings that afternoon. And then on the 24th, I had a NACO leadership call. Completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Eddie?
Mine's really easy. I went on vacation, so I had my NACO FICA meeting yesterday, and that's all I did.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. The only thing that I have to add other than the work session I participated in, advances over the St. Clair Open House. I was there a little early. Heard was it still busy when you were there or were you were there early?
I was there early.
Early, okay, yeah. Heard it was busy at between four and five.
Yeah, it was pretty busy when I was there, so.
Lot of discussion going on with that. The ditch stuff has been mentioned. We've been doing a lot of ditch stuff. And then I had the Blue Earth County Audit interview with our auditors as the chairman, so nothing alarming there at this point. So that concludes my report. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I guess I would entertain a motion to recess to the tab on the app at 11:30.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.
We recessed.
We recessed, yes.